Clerk Segrist, could you please call the rule?
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee, I don't have my list in front of me. Trustee Foster.
Good morning.
Trustee Graham Hudak.
Good morning.
Treasurer Slavens.
Good morning.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Trustee Snyderman. And Supervisor Williams.
Good morning.
All present.
Call for a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
It's moved.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Today is a special meeting. Some of the folks that are in the audience tonight were here last Tuesday night. Tuesday night was a presentation by the Roads Task Force which culminated in seven months of meetings, I believe eighteen separate meetings, which were led by Jim Castillo and trustee Summer Foster as the liaison for the board. The board did not participate very intentionally in those meetings. We were aware of some of the conversations that were going on, but we were not there very intentionally. We had a cross-section of the community come together that represented north, south, east, west, middle Canton, business community, school district, business people, as well as residents, and they spent a lot of time putting together a presentation, which they did Tuesday night. That meeting was quite a bit of public comment, a lot of board questions. There was an underlying data deck of the details that were used for the Roads Task Force to make some conclusions, draw some conclusions, and make the board aware of what some of our options may be. From there, it was very clear after four hours that there was a lot more questions to be answered by, that the board had had. So we sent out the data deck. The board decided an opportunity to review that, and right now, the plan is just a continuation of that conversation. And what I'd like to do is, Tim, you've got a couple slides, kind of just to refresh some of the data that was sent out, or share some of that information, and then what I'd like to do is allow for public comment, and then from there, the board will continue our questions and conversation, try to figure out which direction we're to go. Jim, could you please join Josh and Tim? As the Chair of the Roads Task Force, we may direct some questions at you, sir, so if you would, please sit there. That being said, Tim, do you want to kind of kick us off? And what you got there to your right there is...
Sure. Yeah, so I guess first up, as a reminder of why we're all here, is because the roads are falling apart. This is a piece of Lily Road. It's just a monument, a reminder that we have a serious road problem in the community, as do many communities in southeast Michigan, primarily due to lack of funding for roads and other infrastructure. So with that, I'm just going to take you through very quickly, you know, frankly, we don't have the time to go through every one of these in a great amount of detail.
Tim, can I stop you? I'm sorry, guys. It's another thing, is we do have a hard stop at noon today, guys, because of everybody else's schedules, because we jam this in 12th hour. So at noon, wherever we're at, we're going to call for a closure and then make a decision whether or not we have an extension.
Right, and we've allocated thirty minutes for this first part, which is to go over the materials that were emailed out on Wednesday morning to the township board. Those materials were the bulk of the technical materials that were provided to the Roads Task Force over the past six or seven months. So this first document is a document that depicts should the board want to move in the direction of establishing a road section within the Public Works Division of our department. What would those costs look like? So there is a summary page here that identifies, there's a loan required for equipment to be purchased to stand up the road section. That's about a little over $500,000. About $1.9 million in staffing would be the annual costs. Materials to perform preventative road maintenance activities such as salting, such as pothole patching, some minor concrete repairs, some minor asphalt repairs, total another $543,000. About $900,000 in contracted services is in this list. And then $500,000, which reflects the debt service, which is principal and interest, on bonds that would be issued for the construction of a facility to house the people and the equipment. So the total costs, when looking at it over a ten to maybe as much as fifteen-year period, start at about $4.4 million per year. Couple footnotes here, this excludes overhead. Individuals kind of from my level and above, individuals outside of Public Works Department are not included in these figures, and traditionally, as part of the operational costs, those costs would be. Does not include building utilities, and then any capital improvements during those first three years, as basically everything would be new. It also excludes any road repair and rehabilitation costs. Does cover some basic preventative maintenance costs, but not going out and doing any real kind of heavy-duty fixes on the roads. And just as a caveat, there were one or more members of the task force that questioned, you know, would we utilize a traditional public employee-staffed model for this sort of an operation or not? The purpose of these numbers is really just to reflect, if it was a public model, this is roughly what your costs would look like. If the board had a desire to move in this direction in the future, I think the board's aware, our department has a policy in place that basically says, anytime a new service is added, we evaluate providing that service publicly, providing that service privately, and providing that service with a hybrid, a blend. So if in fact there was a desire to move forward, then we would undertake that comprehensive analysis of the various services. There are an additional nine pages of background on this one that we're not going to go through unless there's specific questions, maybe after I get through each document, and then I'll just move on to the next one here. So the next document reflects the Public Act 51, is the act by which cities, villages, and counties, and the state for that matter, receives money from the gas taxes and the registration fees. This is, again, another fourteen pages of data, but I'll just kind of go to this table, which is a summary of some of the data. If you take a look at this column here in the middle of the chart, there's a column here that shows revenues starting at about $6.2 million based on the current fiscal year calculations of population, length of roads, and the monetary allocation that comes from Act 51 for both the population and the length of roads. So $6.2 million is roughly the amount of money that we could achieve if Canton became a city under that scenario, and with the scenario that the state general fund money that has been pledged in the Public Act 51 a couple years ago would actually be, would not be transferred in at the beginning of the year. So this is kind of the worst-case scenario, and you can see those revenues start at 6.2, and then over the next three years ratchet up to about $6.8 million. I'll move forward here, these are all the individual spreadsheet calculations. And then the second set of data here reflects if that state money does successfully get transferred in to the transportation fund in each of the next three years, the 6.2 million would grow to about 8.45 million over that same three-year period. So again, fourteen pages of detailed background in that memo. The next document that was provided, this is a document that depicts what the ongoing preventative maintenance costs are for undertaking roughly two miles of major roads and 208 miles of local roads. The locals are primarily those public subdivision streets. So again, and a lot of numbers in this table. The bottom line is, it would cost us about $50,000 a year for maintaining those two miles of major roads, and about $3.2 million per year for maintaining the 208 miles of local roads, for a total cost of $3.3 million. So it's an analysis that was done at the request of the Roads Task Force to determine if six mils of road millage was raised, how much revenue within Canton Township from both the residentially-zoned parcels and the commercial and industrial-zoned parcels would that generate. So you can see these numbers, based on roughly 29,000 residentially-zoned parcels, $17 million would come in at six mils, and for the commercial, another roughly four millions, for a total of about $21.2 million. The next document that was sent out was a tool that was developed by staff in order to provide some options for the Roads Task Force to kind of play around with. We developed two different tools. The first is Canton converting to a city, and then the second page is Canton remaining a township. And then the third page, which I'm going to start with first, shows the approximate investment in a road improvement program going forward in either of those two scenarios. So this, again, draft for discussion, the proposal was to put about 54% of the funds into the local road network, and 46% of the funds into the county primary road network of the $12 million that is in this particular analysis, noting that that's about half of what the Roads Task Force had asked for in the prior slide, or the prior document that I showed you. So pardon me. In this scenario, you have operating expenses, because you're a city, that's the 4.4 million that I mentioned. We added in some costs here for that overhead and utilities, which were the items I noted were not in the $4.4 million analysis, that first set of spreadsheets that I showed you. And then the next three-line items represent investments over a 20-year period in the city local roads, the rehabilitation of the city local roads, and then some additional funds here, $5 million for the county primary roads. So altogether, about $15.7 million, plus a 10% contingency allowance, because again, these are very preliminary numbers. This is based on, you know, some rough information at this point, more detailed analysis would need to be done if this was a direction that the board wanted to go. So $17 million of expenses, as I mentioned, $6.2 million of revenue that comes from Public Act 51 in this year, that's a net amount of $11.1 million. Each mil in the township generates about 3.5. You'll see a slightly revised number of that in a few minutes, a little bit higher. But in this scenario, it would require 3.19 mils of additional taxation in order to achieve that goal, that 55-45 split over a 20-year period. Under the township option, the only annual operating expenses that you would have is the cost of one additional staff engineer to manage projects, because you're not a city, you remain a township. And in this scenario, the expenses are $12 million. You would not receive any revenue from Public Act 51, so you're working with $12 million, divided by 3.5 million, that's 3.44 mils. So these were the main tools that were provided to the Roads Task Force, and they discussed and debated some of these, and they were used to help educate and help form the nine recommendations that were received on April the 17th at the study session this past Tuesday. So that's kind of a quick summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions on these, and then maybe we could go into, well, actually, you were going to have public comment, I think, and then after that, we could go into the document that was prepared on Wednesday, I guess, which shows an option for the board to consider for today.
At this point, what I'd like to do is call for public comment, and probably what makes sense is we'll start at the beginning, in front of the room, and just go row by row and work our way back, so everybody gets an opportunity to speak. What I would ask that you do is, if you do speak, is come to the podium, because this is recorded, we want to be able to hear what you're asking on the tape, as well as if you'd state your name, address, and then limit your comments to three minutes, please. Also, if you have, what you want to say has been said twice before, by the time it gets back to you, I'm asking that we don't duplicate and say the same thing over and over, so we can make sure we get all the points out, right, and move through this as quickly as we can with our limited amount of time that we have today. That being said, sir, would you like to make any, front row? Please, yes. Yes, please state your name, address, and then three minutes.
My name is Tony Graemer. I live at 186 Scarlet Drive, Canton, Michigan. My only question I have for you is, Michigan roads, when they're put together, the quality, not so much of the workmanship, but of material that is used in the roads, is subpar. When you go to Ohio, I did a lot of work for Ford Motor Company when I went to Germany. Germany, they guarantee roads for 50 years. Our roads, if you take a look at Sherry Hill right over here, right off of Canton Center, between Beck and Canton Center, that was replaced a couple years ago. In certain areas, it's already fallen apart. So we're going to spend all this money for a subpar workmanship. Not workmanship, but I think it's the quality of the material, because it doesn't last. So if we're going to put something up, and it's only going to last for a few years, we're going to have to do this all over again, or repairs and so on? I think that's wrong. I think we've got to hold the contractors accountable for their workmanship and the quality of the material. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to speak, sir? Would you like to speak, sir?
Morning.
Morning.
I'm named Gary Otusky, 475-96, 10-point drive, Canton. It's interesting, I was at a meeting yesterday, and Bill Wilde was there from Westland, and you know, he's a city, and he's saying, you know, it's very hard to get money from the state, very hard. And the taxes for the roads, where is it? You know, where's the tax on the gasoline, the tax on the registration fee? Where is it? Anything that goes to Lansing, he said, and I say, it's hard to get back to the communities, very, very hard. And so my answer is, I'm totally against raising taxes on homeowners here in Canton. I lived here since 1976. I'm a firm believer, there's other ways to utilize money. And all this infrastructure that the builders have caused failure on, in the city of Canton, township of Canton, it's brought exceeded traffic, infrastructure, utility problems to Canton, heavy traffic to our roads. When one road goes down, say for example, Beck Road becomes like an expressway, so that gets a lot more traffic. So in Ohio, the answer was, you know, they get a lot of money from toll roads, which there's always money somewhere, that's why, one reason, they got more money, but also they're on it better than we are, and they have better material. And so that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Morning. My name is Harry Singh. I live at 2449 Woodmont Drive, and I have the same comments like the gentleman mentioned. First of all, will the contractors will be held responsible for a time period? Secondly, this millage, will it be time-bound, or it will continue till the city becomes? And secondly, will we get the control of the roads on the weightage issue? Like, if we take the roads, can we put up weight limits on the vehicles that can drive? We see a lot of construction trucks driving through the subdivisions, and they are tearing those apart. Will there be some kind of limit placed if we do that road construction material? And would there be a plan fixed in for the future road construction, where you make a two-lane road into a four-lane, or will we have to come back and put up another millage? Is that also being studied in this, that we have the Canton population growing? Will that cause for more millage to be put on the citizens again in few years, because now we have to make a, let's say, Canton Center from Palmer to, from two-lane to four-lane? Is that also being part of a study? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Good morning. I'm Gary Smith. I'm at 46397 Swanmere. I'm sure there's been an awful lot of conversation on the road conditions that are in Canton, but there's a couple of concerns that I have. One, I'll ditto the conversation about the material content that's put into the roads. We, on Swanmere, have a segment of the road that was put in years and years prior to the strip where I reside in, and if you look at the two, there's a dramatic difference. I invite anybody that'd like to, to drive up on Swanmere again, take a look at the approach coming in from Doubletree, and they'll see a big difference in relationship to the material content and the reasoning for the destruction of the road. My question, though, would come out, would be, is that, I understand that part of this conversation has to do with, oh, township versus city, and there's always pluses, there's always minuses between the two. I get it, that there's potential funding that comes in that may be related to us becoming a city. However, why does that have to be? Why is it that because of the population level that we have in the township, that we don't somehow trump or qualify so that we get suitable funding to take care of the infrastructure that we have in the city, or the township of Canton? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one, two, three, fourth row. Ma'am? Sir? Ron? Darian?
Excuse me. My name is Ron Laterno, 6473 Marshall. Want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here this morning. I had an opportunity to serve on the task force. There were some concerns that we had. I appreciate, Tim, your qualifying the model, the cost model, and in so qualifying it, indicating that that is only one method by which this could be executed, that's the 4.4 and the $500,000, that there is some blending opportunity as we move forward. And I'm very interested in seeing how that might unfold as this process develops. I think the overarching thing for me is that this is the first time, I recall, having lived in Canton now for almost 30 years, that there's been a citizens' task force, specifically impaneled for the purpose of looking at our roads, and I want to commend the board for doing that. I think our roads have been orphaned. We wouldn't allow that to happen to a child in our neighborhood. We've allowed it to happen with Wayne County. We've observed it happening, and I think that's a responsibility incumbent upon us now to lean in the favor of what I would call a first principle, that being is, what you own, you take care of. And there are steps moving towards city away from township that we don't know. I understand that. We need to explore that. But to walk away from money that is already ours, gas tax recovery money, and look at new taxes without looking at the former, I think is a step in the wrong direction. So we have a unique chance right now to take a look at this funding mechanism, and then we can decide, if it's decided by the board, what the structure of a city might look like. It doesn't have to be a certain way. That can be developed by a charter commission, but we have to take advantage of money, I believe, that is already ours, and that's our gas tax money. Thank you.
Darian Moore, 4022 Bruton, Canton. I'll keep it short, because I spoke a couple days ago. I did want to just piggyback off what Ron did say. A lot of the task force members did want to do a deeper dive on the numbers, just want to make that clear, on that 4.4 million, maybe an outside independent firm do a study, because that's such a key point in the analysis. That's the take that I'm getting on that. Okay, so just wanted to just reiterate that. Thanks.
Bob?
Hello, sir? Would you like to speak, sir?
I'm getting there.
Hello. I live at 47074 Glasson Berry Lane in Canton, and my question is, or present to you guys is, what guarantees that we're going to get that money for 151 for 20 years? You know, there's people that have lost money, you know, the gas thing can always be changed, and you know, you've got to go and go by what, if you had to take over the whole responsibility of fixing the roads, replacing the roads, you're not even talking about replacing the roads yet, as far as I can tell. You're only talking about maintaining the roads. So I'm, I guess I'd say, I vote against it because of that reason, that they can always, because the new administration can come in and say, I don't like that, I'm changing it, and then you're out of the money, or they just decide not to listen to you, which they, you know, Wayne County does, and state does anyways. So, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so we are now back to one, two, three, four, fifth row. Sir, would you like to speak?
Hello, my name is Mark Rankin. I'm at 302 Savannah Drive. So as a member of an association board in the neighborhood, the obstacle we face in the current, I guess, arrangement is that basically we're responsible for funding the repairs ourself. Our trouble is, it's very difficult, under the guidelines of our bylaws, to get the support of the association to do that. It's obviously a tremendous assessment that would be levied, so I'm here to say, I very much appreciate this initiative, and obviously, without the involvement of the township, I feel like our roads are just going to keep deteriorating, and we'll never see any kind of repair. So I hope that we find a way to get some funding, whether it's through millage or other means, but I think otherwise, we're just going to continue to see them deteriorate. We're never going to have a solution, because I don't see how I'm going to get everybody in our neighborhood to vote for a $14,000 assessment. They already basically told us that they wouldn't when we had an association meeting.
Which subdivision?
Savannah Point.
Thank you.
We had a meeting, and we actually had the assessment by the township done on our roads, so we have a pretty good assessment of how much it was cost. I think it was north of $500,000, and we have a small subdivision, it was.
How many homes in the sub?
32. So, very small.
Wow, okay, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am? Would you like to speak? So, okay, sir?
Morning. Thank you to everyone who's been involved in this, because we do need to fix the roads. Yes, fix our roads, please. And yes, I do believe that all the roads need to be fixed, but the majority of the traffic on our roads is on the primary roads, and a lot of those, like Warren and Canton, Center, Beck, Sheldon, have become safety hazards, and I know everyone wants their subdivision roads to be fixed. And I know everyone wants their subdivision roads to be fixed, and all the roads to be fixed, but we have to take care of the primaries first. I've read so many stories about people having accidents, almost hitting trees. So, I am in favor of paying more, my fair share. If Wayne County and everyone else would jump on board, that'd be great. But, yeah, we have to do something, and I'm willing to pay my fair share. But please, I just ask, let's take care of the most serious roads first, and have a plan to fix all the rest, you know, in that maybe 20-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, please? No? Okay. Would you like to speak, sir? Ma'am? Andrew? Okay. All right. That concludes public comment. Thank you, guys. Clearly, before anything occurs, a lot of questions have to be answered. And a lot of the questions you guys have asked today, we've been asking or have asked as well. So, we're not totally disconnected with what we want to know and understand. But a 50,000-foot view from the meeting that we had, Wednesday, Thursday, no, I'm going to Wayne County, that discussion, we had the neighborhood match of about $3.5 million that came from Wayne County. It was Neighborhood Roads Initiative, and we did get, I think, 20 neighborhoods repaired through that. It was a campaign thing that Mr. Ficano put together. Didn't work for him. Obviously, he didn't win. That being said, it went from miserable that they put that on us, that we had to figure out how we're going to get this done. We executed it, and we did help 20 subdivisions. And now, we're saying, keep doing it. And what has happened is, this year, we got a letter for $388,000. Three and a half million? $388,000. It's so small that it's very difficult to do a lot with. And what we did get, Tim, I think your staff has shared with you, was some commitment that we could, on a local road that feels like a primary road, they would work with us there. So, that was good news. So, there's a couple really rough spots in Canton that we're looking at dedicating that to. It's not a big piece, but it's a very rough, I'll call it, like, it's similar to Hanford areas, where it's really more of a major thoroughfare than it is a local neighborhood road. We've got a couple of those in rough shape. So, we're looking at that. That is coming. Stay tuned. The other thing is, holding Wayne County's feet to the fire in terms of, you're getting $7 million. Why are we only seeing $2 million spent? And Clerk Segrist asked the question specifically, and I had asked back through the Director of Municipal Services for Wayne County, what's your percentage overhead? You've got labor and material that goes into your cost of goods sold for, when you repair $2 million worth of roads in Canton. All right? What's the labor overhead associated with it? Is it 20 cents on the dollar goes into your cost of goods sold, and you're 80% overhead? And that's where the rest of our $7 million disappeared to? You know, what is that number? So, they actually have made a commitment to come back and tell us. I think it's going to be shocking in terms of those from private industry, or come from private industry, in terms of overhead compared to cost of goods sold. But that's information that's coming. What else? Many of the questions asked today, in anything we do going forward, are going to be answered specifically. Tim, is there anything from public comment that you would like to respond or react to or make a comment? And Jim, the same question goes to you, Mr. Castillo.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'd say that, they're all good points. They're all points, you know, moving forward, that we'll certainly give consideration to. I didn't know if, also, you were going to ask for any comments from the board before we move into the next part?
Okay. Okay.
Further to add from many of the public comments.
That would be that point to board. You've got a lot of information thrown at you this past week again. Some of us have been privy to some of that data for months, bits and pieces. So, for Trustee Snyderman and Anne Marie, Hudek and John Anthony, you've got a lot of data thrown at you this week. What questions might you guys have at this point for staff? Jim? That would be the time.
I'll ask one. Thank you. So, a lot of the background information was very understandable. So, I don't really have a lot of questions about numbers, and you just took us through it again, and even answered a couple of the questions that I did have, Tim. The one question I did want to ask was maybe to Mr. Castillo. Tim, you probably know this as well, Director Foss, but maybe you went through this on Tuesday, but it kind of came at me very quickly, was the fact that we would take over only two miles of road, and understanding what that means and why that is?
If a community chose to become a city, you clearly obtain the responsibility and the ownership of the local roads, the local, public subdivision streets. The primaries are really a negotiable item. There is not an element in the Act 51 formula, or there is no guidebook as to the breakdown or the allocation of primary roads between a city and the county. And so, it is the two miles that was shown in the formula that Tim and staff developed was a best guess. Other guesses and estimations were approximating, utilizing Livonia, for example, as an example, and they have about 10% of the county primary, or the primary roads within their community, have been turned over and out of the responsibility of the city. So, it could be two miles, it could be, it could be 10 to 12. It is, it is, there is no guidebook. It hasn't been done in Wayne County for an extended period of time. And so, there's no really great model to say, here's what the expectation might be.
And the roads that aren't turned over, then they're still the responsibility of Wayne County?
No. The roads that are turned over become the responsibility of the city.
I said are not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are not. Yeah. And once again, if I could utilize the example of Livonia, you know, in Livonia, for example, Newburgh Road is the responsibility of the city of Livonia. Farmington Road remains the responsibility of the county. So, it is, it's a patchwork.
Jim answered that very well. I just put the map up here. This was the map that we used to come up with the assumptions of the two miles that would potentially be transferred over. You know, that's likely the minimum. It's, you know, you're basically talking about somewhere between 0 and 58.77 miles, which is the maximum. The county...
Oh. What does it say? There you go.
So, you know, it's somewhere between 0 and 58.77 miles. You don't know until you sit down and negotiate that. I would estimate that negotiation to take about probably four to six months. And then, once you've got something negotiated, the process is, you take that set of recommendations, and you give it to the Michigan Department of Transportation in Lansing, and they decide whether or not that is reasonable or not. And then, if they actually approve it, then we would kind of go backwards and compute the actual, the real Act 51. So, as I think I had mentioned at the April 17 meeting, which was one of the finance director's concerns, was there's a lot of variability in the numbers based on how much roadway we get. So, with the understanding that there were assumptions made for the purposes of doing these calculations, if everybody understands that, and those assumptions would change substantially depending on what we negotiate. Jim?
Yep. One additional point, if I may. And, Tim, if you're able to put up on the screen that formula calculation, one element, irrespective of whether or not you get two miles, or 10 miles, or 15 miles, you, you know, once you become a city, you receive the bulk of the Act 51 revenues, however. Because, as you might be able to discern here on this formula sheet, once you become a city, you receive the major streets and the local streets portion of the formula. And as you can see, the major streets portion of the formula, which is the primary roads, the main driving factor as a part of that calculation is the population. So, your 90,000 individual population multiplied times the current figure, which is $45, brings the bulk of that revenue, that $4 million in this example, comes to the community irrespective as to whether or not you get, you have two miles or 10. Because as you can see, the next line down, the two miles of primary roads, that factor is only, is a smaller one and contributes much less revenue to the community. So, irrespective of the number of miles of primary road you end up with, you would obtain, a city obtains, the bulk of the Act 51 revenue.
Thank you. That's interesting. But it also says to me that we have the potential to have two really good miles of road in our community, and then the other 50 whatever is still owned by Wayne County.
Yeah, okay.
The potential is there. I'm not saying what it would be, but...
Yes. There's also, there's a provision in Act 51 that basically says, you can allocate up to 50% of this money to be used down here in the local streets. So, while there's more money coming in for major streets than local streets, you can transfer up to 50% of that money, provided that you meet a long list of conditions. And like I mentioned Tuesday night, Act 51 is very complicated. We could not begin to scratch the surface, probably doing six study sessions alone just on Act 51. But we have, for the board's confidence and the public's confidence, we have, I have personally talked to the person at MDOT that is in charge of the Act 51 calculations. She confirmed that this math is correct, based on the assumptions that have been made. We've talked with SEMCOG, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. They manage all the Act 51 money in Southeast Michigan. They've confirmed that these numbers are correct. We've talked with Plant and Moran, our auditors. They have Act 51 people on staff. They've confirmed that these numbers are correct. And a number of us have at least some tangential experience, you know, in dealing with Act 51 calculations, because while we're a township, we're not involved in the day-to-day melee of roads. Roads is, you know, a big part of our job already.
Certainly, the expectation would be that if you did have the Act 51 revenues that would come to Canton as a city, you would be in a position to leverage those. Just as in years past, the township was very successful in leveraging some additional dollars of township revenues toward intersection improvements on the county roads, you would have a pool of money available to similarly leverage with county dollars to make the improvements on those roads that still remain under county ownership. And they would have an incentive as well, with a partner, a funding partner, to make those improvements.
Thank you.
If the board did have a desire to explore this further, the, you know, my recommendation to the township board would be that a comprehensive study be done that includes the three big components. We call it ELF. It's the Engineering, Legal, and Financial Analysis. You know, you bring on board experts from the engineering and public works consulting field. You bring on experts on the legal field and experts on the financial side to further refine this preliminary analysis that's been done at this point.
I don't have any other questions. I'm more interested in seeing the next proposal, so I'll stop there.
Go ahead, Diane.
And I apologize. I was not here at the Tuesday meeting. I was at my treasure classes at Central Michigan, but I did read the packet, and I want to thank everybody for all the time they put into this. It's great. Tim, I have a quick question on the private roads that we have. If we became a city, would we be able to use these dollars on the private roads?
We could not. The, you know, Farmington Hills and Novi both have this issue as cities, Livonia to a much lesser degree. But public money, our computer is acting up again. But the public money under Michigan law is not allowed to be spent on private property. So, the property where private roads exist within Canton Township, which is about 30% roughly of the roads, funding, public funding cannot be used to improve those roads. The only way they can be improved is through a special assessment district, where the township acts as a bank in order to float a loan to the residents and property owners within those private condominiums to pay for their improvements. And we have done that a number of times. In fact, we've done more special assessment districts on private roads than we have on public roads.
And I don't know if I'm stepping ahead of myself, but was there an analysis done on how much it would cost the citizens if we were to become a city? What, you know, what the cost would be to each homeowner?
Only to the extent that the Road Solutions Tool that staff developed, you know, made a bunch of assumptions, and tackling the $230 million problem that was laid out by the Roads Task Force over a 20-year period would result in a millage requirement, you know, in the three to four mil range, in addition to the Act 51 money as a city and without the Act 51 money as a township. So, for argument's sake, the millage amount was roughly the same.
Okay. And that would include our police and fire as well, or no?
No, that's just analyzing the roads component of it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Mike, or John, or Anne Marie?
Just a couple, it's my understanding, prior to being a municipal services director, you're a roads engineer in your former life, or no?
I served as the Assistant Director of Public Works for the City of Windsor, a city of about 225,000 people, for about eight years. And we had direct responsibility for roads. So, roads was one of the major services that we provide, and I have, I guess what I'd say is a considerable amount of background in what it takes to actually deliver those services.
Okay. Now, I know some portions of Windsor are to the south of Michigan, but for all intents and purposes, Canton is to the north, and you have better roads. People are talking about, I'm just curious, because I don't, I mean, I know a little bit. I mean, I talked to engineering about, you know, fly ash and things that were experimental in the 90s, and concrete, and what happened, and why we have all this rotting infrastructure in the Midwest and in Michigan and the United States in general. But are we building our roads right now out of what we should be? And if not, what can we do to make sure that our roads are just better? You know, I go, like, E-course Road, I was told by an engineer, E-course Road down by Willow Run was the old runway. It was late in the 1940s. It's seven decades old, and it's some of the best stretch of concrete in Wayne County right now. So, that's, it's a weird paradox to me, that subdivisions built in the 90s would be falling apart while those aren't.
Yeah, it's a, it's a two-part answer. Both parts involve money, for the most part. You know, the standards here, the design standards for pavements, whether you're in the United States or Canada, are pretty similar. You know, the cross-sections and the designs of pavement here will work, provided that you don't excessively load those pavements. And that kind of gets to the question about trucks that the gentleman in the front row brought up. I think it was in the front row. And then, the second issue is, it's about money. And you can build a road, that's great, and if you don't maintain it, it's just like your house. If you build a house in 1979, and you don't do anything to that house, come 2017, it's going to need a lot of work. You're running it to failure, is what we call it, from an asset standpoint, where had you put money into your home over that 30-year period of time, then your home would be in, you know, reasonably better condition today. And the same thing holds true for roads. And the issue is, there hasn't been the money, regardless who you want to blame, per se, for that. There hasn't been the amount of investment required to keep the roads in good condition.
In your opinion, is $18 million enough federal money for Wayne County in total to maintain our infrastructure?
Absolutely not.
In your opinion, does Act 51, has flowed through Wayne County, or even a city like Livonia, is that enough money to maintain the infrastructure and the asset?
Absolutely not. And my defense of that is, every community that is aggressively trying to deal with roads is levying a millage.
Right. I mean, I noticed Brighton is asking for, I think, 4.5... Right, I mean, I noticed Brighton is asking for, I think, 4.5 mils, which is a lot, and that would make, I think, their total millage rate about 20 mils, almost twice as much as ours. And they're a city. That concerns me a little bit. And then, we talked about this on Tuesday, but Act 51 money is primarily responsible for maintaining the roads as opposed to major reconstruction. Am I not primarily? I understand there's nuances.
That's correct. The priority is put into what they call preservation is the term within Act 51 and its various revisions over the years. So the state first forces you to use your money on preservation. These are things like, you know, crack sealing and doing minor, minor resurfacing and patching and repairs before you actually can start reconstructing roads. So you have to prove to them that that is actually what you do. If you don't do that, then you jeopardize receiving your Act 51 money in the future, which no community wants to be in that position.
And if I'm not mistaken, so if I go by the Roads Task Force numbers, again, I want to reiterate this, when you take how much Act 51 money the county receives on behalf of Canton, and how much money is delivered in services, I'm looking at this based on the numbers in that presentation and based on the numbers you presented, that Wayne County currently has 56.28% fixed cost, basically. Either that money is being diverted to other communities, or that money goes into the non- roads maintenance portion. But if we have 4.4 million to run our own roads program, our fixed cost would be 4% higher at 60%. So if we were to, let's say, we have a roads division, we would actually be able to deliver at a less efficient rate, which is a weird notion, right? Because I know, I know we pride ourselves on our ability to, to function at a local level and be a flagship kind of community that people benchmark against. So what would, what about, you know, the, the, the money that Wayne County has traditionally been delivering into the roads now makes that, is it economies of scale? Is it, I mean, what would, what would cause that?
Actually, when you stepped out, we talked about that briefly, and as part of the conversation I had with Bev Watts, Director of Municipal Services on Wednesday. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Judge. The, I asked very specifically, what's your overhead costs? What's your direct costs? So we can have our own internal understanding and analysis of exactly the very valid points you're making, and that is, once we understand that, then we can make decisions. Are they delivering services more efficiently? And she has committed to deliver to us the financial data that relates to your questions that you're asking specifically.
Yes, but for me, is more importantly, is I want everyone to be clear that when we talk about solutions, when we talk about the role Act 51 plays in funding our roads, and we talk about the delineation of, of responsibility, I, I mean, the numbers that were presented to me, when I, when I fleshed them out, seemed to question the assumption that we would be getting more money for roads if we became a city. And this is based on the numbers that are in the blue, the blue presentation that was delivered on Tuesday night. Additionally, if we did, let's say my, those numbers are off and we, and we had more money, those would still be money for maintenance. So instead of orange county trucks, you would see white city trucks dumping coal patch into those potholes that get splashed up on the side of my Ford Taurus.
All right, so then the 4.4 million includes some of that maintenance. It includes pothole patching, by way of example. The pothole patching is not an expense that would be over and above the 4.4 million. So, you know, just theoretically, if you're bringing in 6.2 million of Act 51 money and your expenses are 4.4 million, you know, you've got a little bit shy, but 1.8 million of money that would go into actual physical improvements to, to the road system.
And if we took the, let's say we became incorporated as a city and we got 100% of the, of the primary population money, that $4 million that we're all salivating over, and we only have two miles of the 58 primary county miles, what money would Wayne County use to function the, the purple area? Because like the area, when I look at Sheldon, that's, they're still going to own Sheldon, and that's a nightmare, and they're still going to own Lily, and that's a nightmare. What are they going to fix those roads with if we take the $4 million?
So they're, they, they too would have their own, as they do today, they have their own calculation under Act 51, and they would use whatever remainder based on, let's just say, 56 miles. If there's 58 in total roughly, they would get the formula calculated based on 56 miles of remaining road. So there, again, they don't get a specific allocation per se from for Canton Township. All their local roads, all their major roads are in one page, like the pages we saw. So county-wide, it's one set of calculations. There's not a, an actual calculation for Canton. When we shared those numbers with the Roads Task Force, we did a calculation. We kind of forced it to come up with that roughly $7 million number.
Okay, and then historically, we've been getting between $3 and $4 million of federally, of federal funds coming into Canton Township for, for road repair?
County has received those monies and spent those monies in Canton Township.
And they do get $18 million roughly annually for that, of federal money, correct?
About 16 to 18 million is the average.
So we are currently getting 20% of the federal funds that flow through Wayne County and spent on, on road repair in Canton? And we represent 5% of Wayne County's population?
Yeah, the, the misnomer with that is that that money is leveraging additional money. So it's more, it's more than that, so the 20% number's too high.
Okay, so, but, so 80%, so 80% of those projects are federal funds, correct?
In many cases.
And then we represent, okay, and then there are 43 municipalities in Wayne County, and we are one of 43. So we represent 2.32% of the, of the local governments in Wayne County. That is mathematically correct, according to my calculator. So we are, in a sense, getting more of the, currently, the federal, the federal allocation, we are, would you say, it's safe to say that Canton is, is on, is on the winning end of that currently?
I think we've done pretty well, in terms of the number of projects that we get. We typically get a project every year. Not every community gets a project every year out of the county system.
Okay, thank you.
And a lot of where you were taking us is a good setup for next round of conversations. A little bit of a time check, we've got about 34 minutes, but I do want to get through trustee Anthony and who did.
Just that I've been in Canton Township since 73, and I was fortunate to serve on the Intersection Action Committee back in the late 90s, and we were able to transfer some, some of the millage around and repair about 32 intersections, which made a big difference in, in the community. I'd have to say that it's really time to do something. I mean, we've been fiddling around with this for years and talking about state and federal and county, and nothing's ever happened, and the roads have gotten worse. So I think now is the time to act. And under, with Pat and the board setting up this Canton Roads Task Force, the, the one thing I don't want to see is that it just goes away to another committee and another meeting and, you know, we'll all be dead and buried by the time, or the roads will be gravel roads, you know? I'm thinking about moving out to Ridge Road because that is gravel, and they love it out there. They don't want to pave. So maybe that's the roads of the future in Canton. I hope, I hope not. But I too, I do believe that it's time for Canton Township to take ownership of Canton roads. If we're going to depend on the federal government or the state government or Wayne County, ain't nothing going to happen. Nothing's going to happen. You know, our taxes, we give them a dollar and we get 10 cents back. It just doesn't make any sense. Let's take ownership of the roads. Now, there's the township, the city, which is the best, there's ups and downsides on, on each one. The millage increase, I hate to even think about it, but it seems to me that there's no way around increasing the millage somehow, some way to, to fund those, those roads. The local subdivisions have that SAD, and there was talk the other day about a county, a township-wide SAD to handle the, the road situation. Act 51, God knows how that thing works. You do, but I don't think anybody else knows how that money is, is distributed around. One thing I'd like to see is, whatever we do, is to focus, you know, we have state, federal, local, interstate, focus more on, on the local roads. The local subdivisions, I think, are in worse shape than, than the state or highway roads. We can certainly fix some of those, you know, we talked about Ford Road. Now, we put in for the tire grants for, what, eight or nine of them, and they all get turned down. But I think the local subdivision's roads, if money was put into them and fixed those up, then the quality of life of our citizens would, would increase. We always can bump along on Ford Road or stay off of it, as I try to do. But the local subdivision, you're there every day. If you live in a subdivision, you're bumping along every, every day. Tim, a couple questions. One, the contractors that, if we went to a city or some mechanism where we would have control of the township roads, the contractor, we would select the contractors to do that work?
So there's two parts, right? There's, there's maintenance, which is the day-to-day taking care of things, and then there's repairs. Most cities do not perform the actual repairs themselves. All that work is contracted, and that's the majority of the cost that, you know, is, is really on the table, the $230 million that was laid out by the Roads Task Force. Those are repairs. That's, you know, physically going out, making major repairs, performing some preventative maintenance on the repairs after you've made those, and then some reconstruction as well. So, you know, it, it's a mix, and then the, the 4.4 million that was, that was shown in terms of operating costs, that, that can be, as I mentioned, public, it can be private, although there's no models with that currently in, in Michigan, or it can be a hybrid. And citing my experience at Windsor, we, we did a hybrid.
My, my point was that we would select the contractors. We're not going to have some, somebody that we don't know. I know when we do
Correct.
Contract work for the township, we have a list of preferred people that, contractors that we've vetted. The same thing here, we're not going to go
Correct.
Just because it's money from Act 51, we're going to have to hire the ABC company.
And as contractors, as you know, as board knows, when contractors fail to perform for the township, they don't do work for the township again. The board has set pretty, pretty clear direction on that.
What about warranties on any work? Would there be warranties with any contract that we would, where our taxpayer money is going to go to fund a project? Are we going to get a warranty on that?
Yeah, so, so warranties are a big issue, and warranties drive up costs, which reduce the amount of work that you can do. But, but warranties, you know, to some degree, warranties are necessary. And what you have to do is you have to balance the amount of warranty with the cost of providing that, that, that construction project, so...
Specifications that would be used in, in any road work, is there, is that a standard, industry-wide specifications, you know, three inches, 10 inches, rebar, whatever?
Yeah, for the most part, yes. In the state of Michigan, most municipalities follow the Michigan Department of Transportation's standards, and then they tweak those for local reasons.
Are there new techniques out? I know in the paper recently, there was this truck that goes along and sucks up the debris and fills in hot tar or whatever. Are there new techniques out there that would help increase the life of these roads?
Yes, yes.
What is the life expectancy of, of a road that we would fix in Canton?
So we used to think, we used to think that concrete roads lasted 25 to 30 years and asphalt 15 to 20. There's been a reshaping of that thinking, especially with the problems with concrete in, in, in Michigan. Probably, you know, 20 to 25 years is about the maximum typical useful life of a pavement. But with maintenance, you can extend that useful life.
If we were to fix all the roads in Canton, is it $23 million a year for 10 years? Is that the number? If we had unlimited financial resources?
So the Roads Task Force had, had depicted a number of 230 million, and over a 10-year period, that would be 23 million a year.
Just, I just think it's time for us to take ownership of the roads. The task force has done a heck of a job. We can't let this go by. We've got to do something to address the issue, whatever that is. There's a couple choices up and down.
Thank you, John. Emery?
Thanks, thank you. I know we're against time, so go quickly. And as John and everybody said, you know, roads is what we are, is our main purpose here, to fix the roads. It seems to me that, you know, determining if a city would be secondary, if we want to move quickly with the roads. When you, you did give us a pavement lifecycle here, and we've talked about the design standards. So you had said that there, there's some tweaking locally, so locally, obviously, we could tweak it higher, to a higher grade, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then when you talked about on the 4.4 million, I know we have a lot of data here and it might be buried in here, but the 4.4 million to become a city, it excludes the overhead, the building capital improvement expenses, and it, and it also excludes road repair, rehab expenses, and it only includes minor preventative maintenance. Is preventative maintenance, is that gold patches, basically?
No, so it, it includes the building, all the capital. It includes preventative maintenance. What it does not include is major preventative maintenance, where you're physically going out, say, into a, into a neighborhood and milling, you know, miles and miles of, of pavement up and then repaving, going out and physically removing major sections of concrete slabs and replacing those. It does not include the overhead expenses, which by Act 51, you're limited to charge no more than 10% of your total expenses annually back on the administrative side.
However, but you are receiving the revenues, if you were a city. That's, the, the 4.4 million is the staff's estimation of the operational costs, but you, that's the operation, to operate a roads division. Their estimate, and if you recall, as a couple of task force members mentioned again this morning, that is one of the primary cost allocations that a majority of the task force recommends be challenged, be investigated, be pursued with a more vigorous analysis, given the unique position that Canton has on, on many different fronts, as to whether or not best practices, modern technologies, cost sharing across a number of municipalities, et cetera, could lower that cost. But in addition to that, that, that's the cost of operation. That does not reflect the revenues that the community would receive from the Act 51 formula. That's simply the operation cost, the overhead cost.
Right, so it also, and I didn't see it also, doesn't incl, I didn't see any numbers for the maintenance of the trucks even. I know there's a maintenance staff, but I didn't see main, anything set aside for even that, maintaining the equipment.
Yeah, that's, that's in there.
Was it? Okay, I didn't see that in the numbers. I'm sure it is. We have a lot of numbers here. So basically, you had also said, I mean, all that we would have to do to become a city, primary roads would be at the discretion of the county, so whatever roads we get, would we get the worst roads? You know, would they say, hey, these are the worst roads, you guys take care of those? I mean...
How good a negotiator are you? It's kind of a question, right? It's like, you know, it, it's a negotiation, so the, the county could give us all the crap and keep all the good stuff. Alternative
I love negotiating, personally. I love it.
Alternatively, they could just give it all to us, or they could give us, you know, close to none. So we don't know until that, that process happens, if, if that's a direction.
Okay, because you're, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of county roads still left up there in the colors that you put up, and you're saying, taking, did you say four to six months before it goes to MDOT for approval, or?
You know, given, having worked with the county for 21 years now, I think we'd be optimistic to complete those negotiations in four to six months.
All right, well, thank you. I know we're running against time here, so...
So really, really quick, 50,000-foot view, a lot of good conversation. I noticed some of the audience members were trying to take pictures of the slides that are up here. Send me an email, I'll give you the whole deck, okay? So you don't have to, so you can actually read it and touch it and... Secondarily, the notion of cityhood, there's been a lot of discussion behind the scenes, some information shared with the board, I mean, 150,000-foot view, you know, from that far away on, on the concept. I've got to call into Michigan Municipal League, which is the association for the entire state of Michigan, all cities. Their executive director just happens to be Canton Township's ex-finance director, Tony Menenge. Canton guys, when they leave here, they're the best of the best. They get all over the place, good job. So got to call into Tony, I should talk to him next week. Also, I've got meetings next week with Michigan Townships Association, so I'm going to look for subject matter experts on the concept of cityhood, only from a, what does it really mean to us? 50,000-foot view, and there will probably be a subject matter expert And there will probably be a subject matter expert brought in to have a study session for the Board, to have a conversation. Public will be a part of that conversation. And there may be, because of the length of time that I'm learning it takes to go from ground zero to cityhood, is years, potentially. There may be another task force put together on that, much smaller and nimbler, that can move faster, perhaps. So, put a pin in that right now. Second thing is, the next topic of conversation, we have 19 minutes left. Go, Tim.
Okay, so, given what we heard on April 17th at the study session, staff worked on an option that we feel addresses a number of the items raised by the Roads Task Force. It incorporates really kind of five things. The first is that investments would be made in maintenance, rehabilitation, and repair projects balanced amongst three different categories of assets. Those investments would be made in the state roads, the county primary roads, those are the roads like Canton Center, Back Cherry Hill, Warren, those are the primary roads. And then also in local roads, the, primarily the neighborhood subdivision roads. The second thing is that funding for this option would be derived from a dedicated road millage to be levied over a 10-year period, should the voters agree to do so at an upcoming election. Third, there would be a provision for those property owners in subdivisions that participated in the 2016 County Road Assistance Program, where they have already made some repairs to their neighborhoods, and/or the one remaining subdivision in the township that has an SAD, and that is Lexington Square. So that additional funds would be available to do more repairs, take care of additional problems, but also some preventative maintenance work, so that those repairs that were just done, you know, we get in there, we crack seal, we take care of kind of some of the typical preventative maintenance activities, so we, in my terms, keep the good roads good. The fourth thing, we would, this proposal would address the desire expressed Tuesday night by the Township Clerk to dedicate some of the monies for Ford Road, while addressing many of the recommendations that came from the Roads Task Force. And then finally, it would address the need to have kind of a mix of projects, some small projects, some medium-sized projects, and some large projects. So what I'm loading here is a spreadsheet that we developed. The Board has a hard copy of this document to take a look at. But, so what this looks like, and again, you know, the Board, if you want to play with any of these numbers, that's why I've loaded a spreadsheet and not just a page, so that if you want to change anything here, we can adjust these numbers. But the millage, which is the first of six things that we've put together here, is based on, this 3.7 million dollars in the top corner here is how much one mil of taxation raises in the township. After all the little kind of minor deducts are made, one mil would raise 3.7 million. So, the proposal is to split, again, between the county roads, the primary roads, and the state roads, some percentage of a millage, which totals 1.45 mils, as you can see, and would generate 5.365 million dollars in revenue. We make a presumption that Wayne County would continue to invest to the tune of 3 to 4 million, so we picked the midpoint of that, 3.5 million, in the county road program. So they would, we would continue to get our one project a year. So the annual investment that would be going back into the road system in the community is about 8.9 million dollars per year. It's noticeably, you know, short of the 23 million over 10 years, which kind of came in the form of, you know, what was coming out of the Roads Task Force. So this is at least one proposal for consideration by the Board. I'm noting this line here, which says it would allow for redirection of any unspent funds, so that in the event of, let's just say, by way of argument, we start utilizing this 800,000 a year for Ford Road, the state road, and we get the right-of-way, and, you know, we get the design done to a certain point, but then MDOT chooses not to fund it for some reason. We would have, you know, built some potential money here to help with the funding of Ford Road going forward, but if we knew MDOT was not going to move forward with a project, we'd be able to take the future money from future years' millages from this 1.45 and direct it up into the primary county roads and the local roads. But we would at least have the carrot to dangle before MDOT with some money for Ford Road. So that's millage. This, the second item of six that we addressed was ownership. So the concept here is that the Board would commit through, you know, a vote ultimately of the electorate in the township to propose a 10-year millage. This is the investment commitment in the ownership of the system. It would help stem the bleeding on the paiser road condition of the local and primary roads, buys us some time to evaluate some of the other task force options that were presented, including cityhood, as the supervisor mentioned. Would build some public confidence on the repair and rehabilitation program moving forward, and it would provide some more certainty towards MDOT actually funding Ford Road. The third component of what was put together is some subdivision participation, and what we did here was broke this out into three different thresholds. So, again, this, these are all items that were kind of thrown out by the task force, this is kind of our reaction to it. We would have kind of a small projects threshold, so projects that are $50,000 or less in a given year. The suggestion is to have a 5% match by the residents towards those projects. So, of 50,000, residents would be required to come up with 2,500. So from the millage, there'd be 47,500 from the millage money and 2,500 from the residents. For projects up to 10, sorry, $100,000 in value, there'd be a 10% match, so a 90-10 split, as you can see here. And then for the larger projects, up to 200,000, we would suggest a 20% match, which is consistent with what was done for the County Road Assistance Program two years ago. So those are the three thresholds we're suggesting for Board consideration. The options for the residents would be the pass-the-hat option, which is, you know, so if you're a larger, larger group of residents that want to fix just the road in front of your house, you could get together with those in front of, you know, your property and, you know, go after just a section of the pavement. If you want to do it as an HOA, that's great, and raise your component of the match. But it helps with, those are maybe, you know, a small neighborhood on a small cul-de-sac, they've only got eight residents, and then it would also be an option for the HOAs that are already raising money for roads. Then the second option would be to raise the match through a subdivision SAD, and that would be a directed SAD by the Township Board. That follows a very similar process to a typical SAD. The only difference is, there's not a petition upfront. So we don't ask the residents to go out and circulate a petition to get a certain number of votes, and then bring it back. The Township says, I hereby declare a requirement to make improvements in the roads in this neighborhood. And then you basically begin that process.
So they would be on top of the millage as well?
The question was, would that be on top of the millage? And the answer is yes. The fourth component addresses traffic counts, and staff agree that we would adjust what we call the paiser-driven priorities, the priorities that come from the actual condition assessment of the roads, for at least the primary road projects moving forward. Very difficult thing to do on the subdivision side, on the local neighborhood roads, but we would definitely use traffic counts to adjust the priority of projects for the primary roads. And FYI, we're in the process of getting that request for qualifications from our consulting engineers out. I think staff were working to get that out Friday. I was not here, I'm not sure if that happened, but it's going to happen within the next couple of weeks here.
Tim, excuse me, point of order, we've got 10 minutes left in this meeting, so this is not going to be a time for public comment and questions back and forth, but there'll be plenty of opportunity. I mean, you guys call me, talk, you know, coffee, lunch, whatever. Also, all the Board members are all available and accessible. If you have questions of any of us, dial us up, send us an email. So that being said, team-
Okay, fifth of six, fifth of six items in the recommendations of the task force that we addressed, was that we would perform five cycles of paiser ratings starting this year, as I just noted. We're out for qualifications to do that right now. So we would do those in 2018 through 2026 under this 10-year program. That would get us some good baseline data for future program development at the end of the 10-year term, and potentially before then. And then the final thing that was addressed was the Standing Committee, that a new committee of residents be established. Staff's suggestion is to make that committee much smaller than the last Roads Task Force, perhaps limited to five, five members. This would be akin to the committee that was in place a number of years back for the, what was called the Intersection Action Committee. So where we had three to five residents participating on that, and then a lot of heavy support there by staff of both the Municipal Services Department, finance and budget, and legal. They'd meet quarterly, and the Board, together with staff, and maybe also, I'd suggest, together with the, with the Roads Task Force members, develop a detailed scope of work that this committee would undertake. So, that's, that's the proposal in a nutshell. The last thing that I would throw out there for discussion is, there is an opportunity that if the Board wanted to include pathways as part of this potential millage, that's something that's commonly done, as you see in a lot of the road millages going forward. That has been an area of kind of finance struggle, too, that the Township has had. So it's, if pathways were included as a small percentage of the, what would be in the, probably under the primary county road line item here, you know, some limits could be placed on that, but it creates an additional incentive for those individuals that live in private neighborhoods to potentially support a millage, because they would get more out of it. Not only would they get improvements to the county road system, but potentially, they could get some additional pathways included. So, just throwing that out for consideration. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Guys, there's been a ton of information, and nobody's taking any of this information lightly. Michael and I did have the advantage to have a very extended conversation, and the decision-making that we have to make is, do we want to float a millage ballot issue to the people? Yes or no? That's one first decision we make, have to make. Second decision is, what's it going to look like? How big is that going to be? And then, how, through the definition or description of any ballot issue that we do, the percentage content kind of driven, where's the money's going to be spent? Where are we going to have it directed? The, that begins a whole process in and of itself, that underneath will be a tremendous amount of effort required by Tim and his people, with outside professionals coming in to help us get how we're going to deliver and execute. But at the surface, Michael, do you want to pile on here? I don't know how we move from, you, we, there is a lot of logic and rational and debate, and, and I won't say teeth-nashing, but the, you know, how to break up and how big. And we're sensitive to, we have seniors who, you tax them another penny, that means something else is going to go for them, and that hurts, right? Then you, you know, a lot of different needs, people sitting in this room, you tell me your street you're on, I can tell you what you're probably, you want to have happen out of all this. So we're trying to get balance here. As John and everybody else has stated, we have to do something as opposed to nothing. So I'm going to shut up right now, and Board, how do we move?
Pat, if I could just add one quick thing, I threw this other spreadsheet up here, so that you could also see, based on the 1.45 mils, and based on a range of home values over here in the left-hand column, how much a 1.45 mil would translate to in terms of annual additional taxes. So, at the upper end here of homes, say, 750,000 in value, they would be looking at a, at a cost of $544. A $400,000 home, $290 per year. A $200,000 home, $145 per year. So just at least puts it into context in terms of what, what that would potentially mean to a resident. I would also note that, while I've shown home values and taxable values here as 50% of one another, that's not always the case as you're, we're under proposal, A, depending on how long you've stayed in your house, the taxable value would be considerably, typically considerably less than 50% of the home value. If you've just sold your house, or, sorry, if you've just purchased a home at 200,000, then it comes uncapped, and it's probably going to have a, it's probably going to have a taxable value of 100,000.
What is the average taxable value for a house in Canton?
So, it's $141,600 for the average home in Canton at this point.
Roughly $230 a year, then.
So, just out of curiosity, Tim, where did you come up with the 1.45 mil?
That was a debate, a discussion between Clerk Ziegler and I, purely.
You were out of town, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you would have been here, you would have been in the meeting.
Well, I have a phone, I have a cellphone. Yeah.
We're all talking about, this is not a phone discussion.
I know, well, I'm just, what I'm saying is, I just want to make sure that, we have to do something. There's no question about it. Something has to be done.
Absolutely.
But I'm the one collecting the taxes, and I just want to make sure it's something that our residents can afford. We have to do something, absolutely. I just want to make sure it's something that will pass. And thanks.
And this is just a proposal, so it would be on this body? I'm sorry.
First of all, thank you. When I spoke on Tuesday night of a straw man or something like that, that's what I was thinking of. It makes it more concrete and understandable in my mind, hopefully in others as well. A few questions I had were, the first one you answered at the end, sidewalks, pathways, would that be included in here? And I'd be very interested in, I mean, we need to build a complete community in understanding what any additional cost would be to ensure, one, where we're replacing roads, we're also fixing the sidewalks that are along with them. The other piece of it, and I'm not looking for answers right now, but the other piece of it is dirt roads in the community. Who owns them? Who would own them? Even if we don't own them, can we include the cost of paving dirt roads and a partial cost? For instance, Ridge Road, we just had to go through all that for the mile or whatever it is of paving dirt road costing us $1 million. That may happen again in our community. I want to understand if we can add something in for that. And then my last question is, we talked on Tuesday about doing a SAD instead of a millage, and it seems more complicated to me, but did we think about it for the local, the local roads, the neighborhood roads, instead doing an SAD such that the private home, the homeowners on private roads wouldn't be taxed for the local road piece of it? But you're right, if we add pathways and things like that, there could be incentive for them as well. So those are the questions that come to mind. This is the kind of thing that I was looking for, so I appreciate it.
Now, out of time. The, I made a commitment, we'd have a hard stop at noon, it is noon. What I'm going to ask is the Board- What I'm going to ask is, the board, kind of offline, in groups of less than three, so we don't have any Open Meetings Acts violation?
Can we just do a thumbs up?
Go ahead, Michael, yeah.
We just take a thumb, maybe a thumbs up on like the three kind of questions? Is this the amount we wanted? I mean-
Well, see, you and I had the advantage of having extended, you know, hour-plus conversation and a lot of side conversations. The rest of, okay, the rest of the group did not have that advantage, so now what we have to do is try to go through, because, Steve, everything you just, those points you just made? Because we were sitting in the room together, we talked through a lot of those, right? We had that advantage. And we either have to have these conversations in public, or in small groups, to try to find out if we do have established a consensus. Michael wants to ask a couple of thumbs up, thumbs down questions. We're going to do that, and then I'm going to call for a motion to close the meeting, and then ask that everybody work hard offline, and then start communicating back through, so we can figure out where we're at. That being said, Clerk Seigras? If you're comfortable with a couple of straw pull here.
I just, if what comes before the body next looks remarkably different, I just imagine, from a transparency standpoint, what that would, you know, that's where I get a little bit on the concern side. Why I would be really helpful if we had a discussion in the meeting about if this is palatable, if there should be tweaks. I understand we ran out of time, I am probably responsible because I talk more than I should.
Well, or the other options, we have another study session next Saturday morning, is an option, or Friday I'm available, I can do something Friday. I cannot do anything Sunday through Thursday.
You're also up against timing also, correct?
I would say that I'm very acceptable in this type of concept, and just what the millage amount is, is the only question in my mind. So I'm supportive of that as a concept. The other thing I forgot to mention was, in all our projects, we usually put 10% contingency. Is that built into here, and that kind of thing?
That's good, those, that's fifth level degree, granularity-
That's, I'm not talking about the projects, I'm talking about whether that millage number has 10% contingency, that, right?
We'd have to get down what we could within that.
Right, so to me, I want to do a number that gets the job done. So I want to make sure that if we're asking for this of the people, that the number that we pick gets the job done on all the things. So, I mean, I would be more comfortable talking about a realistic number, is what, I understand what Diane says about people having to pay their taxes, I'm concerned about that, too, that's going to affect me, all of us in the room, but I want it to be a good number, so I'm willing to discuss that. But the concept, I'm supportive.
And just real, I'm a 50,000-foot view. Based on the Roads Task Force numbers, we'd have to raise six mils, not 1.45, but six mils to get it done in 20 years, or 10, 10 years, 10 years. Three, four mils to get it done in 10 years. So this is obviously lower than that even, with, don't give up on all the other angles and approaches that we need to work, chase.
Pat, if I could just clarify, too, so it's-
27-year fix here.
It's six mils, six mils over 10 years, three to four mils over 20 years.
Well, I guess to that end, I would be, I would be more comfortable with maybe a 20-year period as opposed to a 10-year period, because then, in a sense, you're doubling the amount of work you get done, and at the end of the day, it's still going to amount to $3 a week for me personally. I know it's not going to be that same thing for everybody else, but I would gladly pay $3 a week over a 20-year period, if I could not have to spend four times that much money on realignments for my vehicle, new tires, rims. That's just me personally.
My opinion, the 1.45 is much more palatable than the six or the three mils. I think that's totally astronomical and outside of what Canton residents would like to see coming from this board and coming on their ballot. And I would also like to say that I think that the ratios that Tim has put seem about right to me, how he's broken it out between local primary and state roads, and it seems like somebody, everybody gets something from this proposal.
Even if we, I assume we'll continue to look for synergies for other funding also. There's a lot of grants out there for sidewalks and things like that that I'm seeing, and also even if we bring a research more into Canton, if we can form some partnerships, so we'll continue to do that.
It appears we have consensus that we want to do something. It appears that we have consensus on the distribution of how it's being presented. So the only remaining question is, how big that number's going to be? And that's not clear that we have consensus there. So maybe that's our single challenge, is to go off individually, do what we need to do to try to come back and consent, again, in small groups. And then if there's, we find it's necessary to have another public discussion, next Saturday would be probably the soonest, unless we do it on Friday.
Well, could-
Unless we can reach consensus offline, and then come back with an RBA on May 1st.
Or, could the RBA have blank spaces in it, and we just, at that next meeting, discuss what we want to put in the blank space?
Sure, sure.
Out in turn?
But work hard offline, too, to try to reach consensus in small groups.
That'll include administration, just the questions that I had, just of response to those.
Yeah, please, continue to fire your questions in, don't ever stop doing that, right? Make sure, you know, any questions you have, get them to Tim and company, and we'll get you the answers. Okay, so, we have direction, Michael? In your mind?
Yeah.
Okay. And, call for a motion to close the meeting, 12:06.
Agreed.
Second? Favor state, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, have a good day.